Hi, I'm Montgomery County Executive Mark Elrich.
Hi, I'm Gay巴Budnose.
I'm Evan Glass.
I'm Councilmember Will Jawando.
Hi, my name is Lori Anne Sales.
And my name is Natalie Fanny Gonzalez.
I'm Andrew Freethan.
Hi, I'm Dawn Ludke.
I'm Sidney Katz.
Hi, I'm Kate Stewart.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Balcom.
Hi, my name's Kristen Meek.
I've been a community activist, civic activist for a long time. I saw a lot of people, you know, come to public meetings, testify, and never feel they were listened to. I wanted to be somebody who would sit on the other side of the dais and listen to people and make them feel that the public process is something that they, you know, can really make a difference with.
I've been interested in public service my entire professional career, and I, at the end of the day, just want to make sure that we live by the mantra that we all succeed when we all succeed.
I've lived in Montgomery County for more than 20 years and started getting involved in my local community, which was a very growing, burgeoning downtown Silver Spring. And so I worked with my neighbors and we started a community association, and I realized at the ground level how important local government could be. And all these years later, I'm proud to be serving on the county council.
Being born and raised here in Montgomery County, I was very aware at an early age of the disparities in our county depending on where you lived and where you grew up. That depending on where you lived, you had different access to high-quality schools, to public transit. I lost one of my best friends, unfortunately, to gun violence when I was growing up. And it made me analyze and look at the different circumstances between his life and my life that led to that different outcome. And I dedicated myself at that point, didn't know what it was going to be. And I think that eventually led me to public service.
I'm the daughter of two public servants. My mother was a social worker in Montgomery County, and my father was in the United States Army. This is my opportunity to give back.
To me, public service isn't a career choice, it's a calling. Started advocating in middle school, high school, through college, and got involved in working in public service at the state level. Ultimately decided to go back to my roots as an advocate and ran for county council in the only place I've ever called home.
I decided to run for county council and become a council member after spending nine years at the state in an advisory capacity as an Assistant Attorney General. I truly enjoyed my time working with folks from all over the state, and I wanted to be able to take that information and take that experience and bring it back home to my own neighborhood.
I've been active in my community from the very beginning. And when I moved to Montgomery County nearly 28 years ago, I wanted to make sure that we had a great place to raise our daughter. And my focus is still the same. I want Montgomery County to be a great place to raise a family, and I see the council as a natural evolution of my public service.
I've been working as an advocate for years in Montgomery County, and so when the opportunity arose to be part of a block of new council members coming on to make some of that legislation, I realized that this would be an amazing opportunity to bring some of those grassroots groups, those community voices directly into the seat of power.
My mother was born in Gaithersburg, and her parents, my grandparents, had a store there. And one of my mentors, a gentleman by the name of Carol Kearns, Mr. Kearns and my father were good buddies. Anyhow, he came in the store one day and said, "Sydney, we need young people to get involved in the city, and you should start coming to City Hall." So I ran for office in 1978, but it was really for civic work.
My first job out of college was working for CASA, the Latino immigrant nonprofit, working for the Maryland Dream Act. After that, and spending a few years working on the Purple Line and other issues that affect the community, I was appointed to the Montgomery County Planning Board. I decided to resign from my planning board position to run for office, and now here I am.
What first led me to public service was the fact that we didn't have enough women, actually, in our local government. So that's why I first ran for the local city council. And as we've seen by this historic election this year, this is still relevant today.
There's so many great things about Montgomery County.
The best thing about Montgomery County is its diversity.
We have some of the most diverse cities, towns, and communities.
In the entire country.
And that touches so many different areas from what my kids' schools look like.
Which brings along with it food.
Tasting the culinary delights of so many different countries.
We can find everything here.
Our residents, who represent this wonderful tapestry of countries from around the world.
This is an amazingly welcoming and inclusive place.
My mom is a Chinese immigrant, and when she and my dad settled here, that was one of the things that they liked most about it.
A diverse set of opinions and perspectives.
Those ideas about inclusiveness and justice are pretty widely accepted.
And it makes us stronger.
Kind of share common goals, common vision of society. Makes this a really nice place.
Montgomery County is filled with tremendous amounts of opportunity.
Small businesses that we have here in the county. Ninety-five percent of our businesses have less than 50 employees.
Educational opportunity through our tremendous public schools.
The most educated in the nation.
With our federal institutions, we have really great, smart people. We attract smart people, the best and the brightest.
The purpose-driven people who we have here, which is unrivaled anywhere else on the planet.
You have all a melting pot of ideas and solutions to the world's problems, and the smartest people in the world trying to solve them.
And it's important that we have that well-informed public citizenry that we do, which we are very blessed to have here in Montgomery County, informing our policymaking. We have a wonderful park system.
It has a gold standard.
We have wonderful outdoor spaces, whether you like hiking.
My kids love biking, so all of the bike trails that we have and more on the way.
Getting on my bike and going to Sligo Creek to exercise with my family.
Where people can recreate and unwind.
Or kayaking.
I live right by Brookside Gardens, which is our jewel.
It's about natural treasures.
It's the open space and our ag reserve.
Potomac River, Rock Creek Parks.
We have so much to offer all across the county.
Suburban.
Urban areas.
If you want to go to a farm.
And everything in between.
We have it all in our wonderful parks and farmland. I love our arts and culture. If you want to go to the theater, we have a great arts community.
Entertain myself with live music. Anybody who knows me knows that I'm very much into bands. Still a rock and roller after all these years.
Are resilient. We were the most vaccinated jurisdiction in the nation.
So welcoming community.
We have a little bit of everything here.
And we also don't want to forget that we are the home of the Montgomery County Fair.
And I'm going to say a stop-in at MLK's Lazy River, have to include that as well.
We have a really tight neighborhood association. We all know each other, and it's pretty cool just to mingle with them.
And all of these things make our county an incredible place to call home.
And we're trying to do right and make sure everyone has the opportunity to thrive
Good morning, and welcome to our historic event. My name is Kenneth Nelson. I have the honor of serving as pastor of Seneca Community Church in Germantown, Maryland, and serving the faith community in Montgomery County. Welcome to our 2022 inaugural ceremony for our Montgomery County Executive and the notable members of the county council. Please allow me to introduce today's mistress of ceremony, Mrs. Leslie Foster. She serves as an evening anchor of WUSA9. Leslie Foster has spent more than two decades working to earn the trust of viewers in the greater Washington area in her role as a journalist, advocate, and first informer. She works to inspire and make an impact through her work as a weekend anchor at 5:00, 6:00, and 11:00 p.m. She also leads the Station Impact Series that links WUSA9 journalists with the community to solve problems. Known for her warmth and ability to share reaching stories, Leslie thrives on work that touches everyday living and makes a difference in the lives of others. Her career work has been recognized with numerous awards, including three Emmys for Best Anchor, plus numerous other Emmys, the Edward R. Moore Gracie, NABJ Salute to Excellence, Associate Press, and Tigna Makes a Difference Award. Please join me in welcoming Leslie Foster.[658.61][658.61][applause]
Good morning. Oh, wow. I think we're going to have to try that again. I thought we were at the 2022 inaugural ceremony for the county executive and the 20th County Council for Montgomery County, Maryland. So, good morning. It's a very good morning, and thank you Reverend Nelson for that introduction. I'm so pleased to be here with all of you today as we inaugurate our county executive and the 20th County Council. The people that we elected to lead, right? And the people who will represent our great county. And I say "me" because I'm a resident of Montgomery County too, a proud resident.[716.01][716.01][laughter] Before we get started, I want to remind all of you of a little housekeeping. Let's turn the phones off or put them on silence. You know how to do that. I also want to give a shout-out to a pair of talented musicians, the wonderful cellist who played in the lobby as you entered, Cuta Ha Silva, and the pianist here in this beautiful musical hall, the Strathmore Artist in Residence Ellington Carthen. Can we give them a big round of applause? Now, ladies and gentlemen, the reason why we are here today, please join me in welcoming Ladies and gentlemen, please rise if you can for the presentation of the Colors by the Montgomery County Combined Honor Guard and the Montgomery County Firefighters, Pipes,
Out of door, left, face. Show order. March.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for our National Anthem performed by vocalist Calvin Dukes. He's accompanied by the U.B. Don't leave us, Calvin, because...
I won't.
Well, don't leave us ever, but don't leave us right now because we would like for you to stay with us, and we'd all like you to stay with us as we stand for the pledge of allegiance and then the performance of Lift Every Voice and Sing. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now back for an encore, Calvin Dukes, who will perform Lift Every Voice and Sing after
Lift every voice and sing to earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of faith that the darkness has taught us. Sing a song full of the faith that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won.[1185.83][1185.83][music] Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won.[1218.83][1218.83][applause]
Out of door, right, face.
Please be seated. And can we also just give one more round of applause to the Combined Honor Guard and the Joint Public Safety Pipes and Drums, and of course, the beautiful voice of Calvin Dukes, our vocalist and the U.B. As we say in the church, Calvin can sing. Now, in keeping with the solemnity of this day, we turn to prayer for inspiration. Joining us are Rabbi Abby Sharofsky, who is Director of the Intergroup Relations and Rabbi in Residence of the Jewish Communications Relations Council of Greater Washington, and the Reverend Diana Wengayoreo, who is Senior Pastor of the Hughes United Methodist Church.
Good morning. This week, Jewish communities throughout the world will read the Torah portion of Vayishlach from the Book of Genesis. This reading includes the story of the biblical figure Jacob, alone on a bank of a river, wrestling with a divine being through the night. Jacob overpowers the angel and asks for a blessing, and is told his name will no longer be Jacob, but Israel, for he has struggled with beings, divine and human, and has prevailed. Jacob's blessing is rooted in what was, an acknowledgement of the struggle and pain he endured and his unwavering commitment to his family and his people. Jacob's hard work, his dedication to ensuring safety and security of his family, and his desire to repair what had been broken are lifted up in this blessing. And he bears a new name to remind him of the importance of his struggle and the strength he can derive from it. We are here this morning in honor of County Executive Mark Elrich and members of the county council. County Executive Elrich, returning county council members, your leadership and guidance brought our county through an unthinkable time. Through the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, through school closures and food insecurity, through housing instability and economic crisis. Like Jacob, you struggled through ordeals well beyond your control and emerged from the struggle and continue to lead. Your unwavering dedication to serve all who live in Montgomery County, whether they are families living here for decades and generations, or newly-arrived neighbors seeking refuge and safety, this is a blessing I pray will endure. I pray our elected officials, returning and new, will lead with wisdom and patience, justice and compassion. May the Holy Blessed One watch over those who serve Montgomery County in elected office, community affairs, law enforcement, medical and first responders, protecting them from harm. Creator of all, bless these leaders and officials, judges and teachers, with the courage and moral fortitude to lead Montgomery County through these next years. May we continue to grow together from strength to strength, and together we say, amen.[1543.32][1543.32][applause]
Let us continue our prayer this morning. God, the Creator of the visible and invisible, we stand before you in awe, seeing how great and wonderful you are with all humankind. There is nothing for us to say except to thank you for all provisions you have given us during the past years. You are the source of all true goodness that sustains us. We thank you, God, for being the God of all. Today, we are gathering to offer you prayers for this county and for these women and men who had the courage to stand up and to serve your people. We are grateful for the gift and the skills to serve our communities. We give you thanks for their lives and abilities to stand up, to do the small and big things for the common good. We thank you for those who already have served. We trust that they have served to the best of their abilities with the wisdom that comes from you, oh God, the source of all. We thank you for the new individuals that in this inauguration are accepting great responsibilities. We thank you for new opportunities to open their hearts to see what is needed in our cities and what can be done to alleviate the food insecurity, improve education and healthcare, to help our community flourish. Again, give them with wisdom and courage, and we ask you, God, to protect them from evil and help them to keep their minds and hearts focused on the good they can do while they continue serving with compassion, love, and integrity. We pray for power cannot distort their understanding of justice and equality, and we pray that nothing can damage their hearts and good intentions to serve. Protect them by day and by night in times of joy and in times of trial. Dear God of love and peace, send your steadfast love upon each one of them and their families. Our people want and need humble and integral defenders of the truth. God, send you Holy Presence so they can serve you, they can serve your people in the best possible ways. Today is a day of hope in our county, and we know they know what they have been called to do. We ask this in your holy name. Y querido Dios, te pedimos que bendigas en gran manera a estos nuevos integrantes de la fe que con mucha sabiduria y entendimiento puedan guiar a tus comunidades. Padre, necesitamos personas que sean honestas e íntegras para gobernar, y todo esto te pedimos que bendiga sus familias y los bendiga con salud y con paz en todo momento. En tu nombre oramos, amen.[1714.38][1714.38][applause]
Please be seated. Before we move on, we'd like to acknowledge some distinguished members of our audience today. As I read their names, I ask that you hold your applause until the end so we can give them that rousing round of applause at the end after all have been called. I also want to apologize in advance if we have missed anyone. If we did and you feel special, say your name in your seat.[1756.35][1756.35][laughter] And know that we are saluting you. To the list now, friends. Lieutenant Governor-elect Aruna Miller is here, and she will bring remarks later on. U.S. Senator Ben Cardin, represented by Ken Reichardt. U.S. Senator Chris Van Hollen, represented, I should say, by Karen Hendricks. Representative Jamie Raskin, represented by Kathleen Connor. Melena Mallorca, Salvadoran Ambassador to the United States. From the Montgomery County delegation, Senator Susan Lee. Senator Will Smith. Delegate Eric Delegate Eric Lutke. Delegate Ann R. Kaiser. Delegate Pam Queen. Delegate David V. Frazier-Hidalgo. Delegate James Gilchrist. Delegate Sarah Love. Delegate Albert C. Carr Jr. Delegate Julie Palakovich Carr. Delegate Emily Shetty. Delegate Charlotte Crutchfield. Delegate Lorie Charcutian. Delegate-elect Chow Wu, represented by Jody Wang. And from our municipal public servants, we have Mayor Judd Ashman from the town of Gaithersburg, Councilmember Ryan Spiegel from the town of Gaithersburg. Mayor Bridget Donald Newton of the city of Rockville. Councilmember Burl Weinberg, city of Rockville. We're getting close. Councilmember Monique Ashton, city of Rockville. Councilmember David Miles, city of Rockville. I mean, the city of Rockville showed up today, huh? Mayor Kate Stewart from the city of Tacoma Park. Oh! That part. Hi. Turns out we're going to be seeing you again soon. It's like television, you never know what's going to happen sometimes. Mayor John Compton, town of Washington Grove, and Councilmember Lisa Henderson with the city of Gaithersburg. And now, please, a round of applause. I was thinking, wow, there's a Kate Stewart on the council and the mayor, like, how's that work? On behalf of all of you here and those at home, we want to thank you for your service, your work and your commitment is making a difference in people's lives. And while we are saying thank you, let us also acknowledge the incredible team here at the beautiful Strathmore Music Center. No matter the event, this venue is spotlessly appointed. It is a crown jewel in our county. So let us lift up and thank Monica Jeffries Hazangelis, who is the President and CEO, along with the entire staff of this amazing facility. As you know, it takes a village to run anything. And people, of course, travel from near and far to come to the Strathmore, so it is absolutely one of the most incredible places and the perfect place for today's event. So, we have given the Strathmore team a round of applause. We are so grateful for all of them. And right now, I get to introduce our Lieutenant Governor-elect, who is another proud Montgomery County resident. She is going to come to the stage. She lives in Darnstown. She is no stranger, as you know, in Montgomery County. She worked for the County Board of Transportation for 25 years. She served eight years in the Maryland House, of delegates representing District 15. So ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Aruna Miller, who is also your next Lieutenant Governor.
Thank you. Adelai Stevenson once said, "Patriism is not a short and frenzied outburst of emotion, but rather, it is a tranquil and steady dedication of a lifetime." Good morning, Montgomery County. I am so excited to be here at the inaugural ceremony of individuals who will give their patriotic, tranquil and steady dedication to serve the county that we all call home. Let me begin by thanking each and every one of you for taking the time to be here and to forgiving the best of yourself and being committed to our county. To the faith leaders, thank you for feeding our souls. To the talented singer and musicians, thank you for bringing soul to our lives. To Leslie Foster, Mistress of Ceremony, glad to know your ankle and wrist have healed, and I hope that Boomer the Puppy is keeping you out of trouble. Now, you all know that she recently broke her ankle and wrist, right? And it was a result of taking a picture of her little puppy. So I'm hoping that, you know, that she stays out of trouble these days with her puppy. To all the dignitaries, elected officials, both current and former, thank you. And I want to express my gratitude and appreciation to the four departing council members. Councilmembers Tom Hucker, Nancy Navarro, Craig Rice, and Hans Reamer. Please join me in thanking them. So from all of us, we thank them for their dedicated, you know, service to public service, and we wish them all well as they head into the new adventures of their lives. My name is Aruna Miller, and I am proud to call Montgomery County my home for over 32 years. This is where my college sweetheart and I raised our three daughters, who all graduated from Montgomery County Public Schools. Yeah? Right? And this is where I had the pleasure of working as a transportation engineer for Montgomery County DOT for over 25 years, and this is also the pleasure that I had of serving as a Maryland State Delegate to represent the people of District 15. And now, today, I'm ecstatic to be the Lieutenant Governor-elect of the state of Maryland. And on behalf of Governor-elect Westmore and myself, I bring greetings to all and to offer our heartiest congratulations to County Executive Mark Elrich on his reelection, to the five incumbent councilmen on their reelection, and the first-ever 11-member County Council that includes the newly-elected six women council members. Right? We applaud all of you on your victories and all that you've overcome to reach this significant moment. We, the voters, added a Latina, an Asian, and expanded our Black representation on the County Council. Right? Yes. And now, this is a majority female County Council. How about that? This is a historic slate of candidates for the County Council, and I think it's safe to say that Maryland made a little bit of history this year, too, with the election of the most diverse statewide ticket ever. In Maryland, as in Montgomery County, diversity is our greatest strength. Governor-elect Westmore and I look forward to working together in partnership with the County Executive, the Montgomery County Council, and each and every one of you to build a county and a state where we leave no one behind. Because Montgomery County, you deserve the very best and nothing less. Thank you, and may peace be with you and your family during this holiday season.
Thank you again, Lieutenant Governor, for those inspiring words. As you know, today, we are here for a very solemn and historic occasion. We will officially inaugurate the people that we have selected to run Maryland's largest jurisdiction, Montgomery County, a county that is, as you know, rich with diversity and with culture. Today, our County Executive and 11 council members will raise their right hands and swear oaths to serve this county. This is the 20th County Council that we have under our current charter, and as our county continues to grow and to prosper, our population has blossomed over the last decade. So we've expanded representation, as you know, to meet the needs of all of our citizens. So with this new County Council, we have 11 members instead of nine. Again, as the Lieutenant Governor mentioned, but we're just going to keep on saying it, of the 11 members of the County Council, six of them are women, which is the most of any time in our county's history. And you can also look up here and see that this is the most racially diverse council in our county's history, and that deserves a round of applause, too. If you know the history of Montgomery County, you know that over the years, it has grown from this forested wilderness of just a few thousand people to a thriving, diverse jurisdiction of more than a million people. And if you drive in traffic from time to time, you get a sense of that. People who've come from all over the globe to make this place their home. Montgomery County, as we know, is a welcoming, cosmopolitan community. It's an ideal place to raise a family, to start a business, and live a good life. It's also one of the most diverse communities in the nation. Germantown, Gaithersburg, Rockville, and Silver Spring all consistently rank in the top 10 most diverse communities in this country. Our leaders and our residents embrace diversity as a core strength, and we live in a community where racial equity and social justice are guideposts for decision-making, where people of different backgrounds and beliefs are shared and brought together by the promise that no matter what you look like or where you come from, you are welcome here in this place. Montgomery County is a community where people stand up against hate. We stand together with our friends and our neighbors to proudly show our unity. We embrace love in all of its expressions of humanity. We live in a community where the common thread that pulls us together is the outstanding quality of life that our community offers. Montgomery County truly has it all, from a world-class school system and outstanding institutions of higher learning, to award-winning restaurants, arts and entertainment districts, abundant parkland, and green spaces for recreation, and multimodal transportation options. Montgomery County, as you know, is also home to the largest school system in Maryland. It is the 14th-largest school system in the United States, with students from more than 158 countries speaking 115 different languages. It is also a community focused on the health and welfare of its residents. Our community is home to an extensive network of nonprofit providers here that work in partnership with the government in Montgomery County to ensure that there is a safety net for residents needed. When COVID-19 vaccines became widely available, Montgomery County quickly rose to be the highest vaccinated large county in the nation. And that is in large part because of our outstanding nonprofit and community partners and our health providers, who reached residents in every corner of this county to ensure that vaccines and health information were widely accessible. It is also because we live in a community that looks out for one another and takes care of our neighbors in need. This county's proximity to the nation's capital results in federal partners like the National Institutes of Health, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, the U.S. Product Safety Commission, and many more calling Montgomery County home. Our community is also filled with innovation. Montgomery County is home to thriving life science and biotech companies, information technology firms, hospital and tourism headquarters, agribusiness nonprofits, advanced manufacturing, and so much more. But these things don't happen by chance. It is leadership and community support that makes all of these things a reality. And we know that these last few years have been hard for all of us. We've been fighting COVID. We've been trying to find a new normal. And today, we are here to celebrate just how far we've come and our future as we inaugurate the people seated here who will continue to move Montgomery forward. Now, I'm checking the clock here. It is 11:46. And dear audience, you may not be aware, but by county law, the term of the last council does not end until noon on the first Monday of December. So we cannot swear in the members of the new council before that time today. In television, we would call this a stretch. But no one wants me to stand here and talk for 14 minutes. So luckily for us, the U.B. Blake Chamber Orchestra is going to entertain us with some musical selections until the clock hits 12 o'clock. Nothing happens until 12:00. So enjoy this brief interlude, and we'll be back here when our ceremony resumes. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm watching the clock, and it's 11:58. So we're getting really close. If you want to take your last snaps really quickly of our soon-to-be inaugurated new county council and county executive, go ahead. There's still another minute or so to get some snaps in. Give you a few more seconds to get back to your seats so we can begin the process. Thank you for your grace on the timing. Little factoid there. Now you go back and tell your friends. Can't happen before noon. All right. It is almost noon, so I think we can continue with this part of the program. It is, of course, time for the new county council to take their oath of office. Today, we offer the best wishes to all of you and your mission. It is my pleasure and honor to introduce the 11 individuals who are your Montgomery County Council Members-Elect. I'd ask that you rise as I say each of your names. Natalie Fani Gonzalez. Andrew Friedson. William Will Opayemi Jawando. Sidney Katz. Don Lutke. Kristin Mink. Lori Ann Sales. And Kate Stewart. And now the Honorable Karen Bichelle, Clerk of the Circuit Court, will administer the oath of office to the Members-Elect of the Montgomery County Council. Good afternoon. Okay, so I'll raise my right hand. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to say aye, and then we're going to go down the line, starting at this end. Aye.
Gabe Albernaz. Evan Glass.
Marilyn Balcom.
Natalie Fani Gonzalez.
Andrew Friedson.
Will Opayemi Jawando.
Sidney Katz.
Don Lutke.
Kristin Mink.
Lori Ann Sales.
Kate Stewart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
County Council Member of Montgomery County.
County Council Member of Montgomery County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
It's like the family getting together for the first time before dinner. These are your new county council members. We wish them well on the journey.[1304.14][1304.14][applause] We wish them well on the journey. Thank you to Honorable Karen Bichelle for administering that historic oath of office. We know that this is a special day for your family and your friends and for the county. It is now my pleasure to introduce to you the county council president, Gabe Albernaz, who will provide remarks on behalf of the 20th Montgomery County Council.[1330.14][1330.14][applause]
Buenos dias, good people. How are we doing today? Good. I am Gabe Albernaz, President of the County Council, and I am incredibly humbled and privileged to be here today to mark a new chapter in Montgomery County's history as we swear in the members of the 20th County Council. I want to begin today by acknowledging our families, friends, colleagues, mentors, and teachers that are with us in person and in spirit. The love and support you have shown all of us throughout our professional and personal lives is why we are here, and we will never be able to thank you enough for that support. Congratulations to County Executive Mark Elrich, as he returns to lead Montgomery County for his second term. We look forward to continued collaboration between the executive and legislative branch and our collective efforts to move Montgomery County forward. And to my colleagues of the 19th Council who are moving on, Tom Hucker, Craig Rice, Hans Reimer, Nancy Navarro, thank you for your dedicated public service. These four outstanding silver servants have served for over six decades of service for the people of Montgomery County and have achieved so much during their time on the council. Tom has been the leading voice on the council on green initiatives and policies that bolster protections for working families and their children. As council president, he provided a roadmap for this county and shepherded us through the complexities of the COVID-19 pandemic while concurrently offering unique solutions to longstanding inequities. Craig Rice was an important architect of the blueprint for Maryland's future and has spearheaded initiatives that ensure all young people in Montgomery County have access to education, technology, and career opportunities that set them up for success. We will continue to value his leadership on education matters, and we will build upon them. Hans Reimer has brought a visionary and innovative approach to modernizing and transforming our county's economy and tackle challenging issues that have led our county into the future. His focus on smart growth and leadership in connecting our public-private nonprofit sectors has set us up for a strong path forward. And Nancy Navarro's fiscal leadership has strengthened standards and protected the integrity of our county's finances, preparing us to weather future challenges and rainy days. Nancy has been the voice in our county when it came to ensuring that all our policies and decisions are made through an equity lens. And as the only woman on the 19th Council, she has been an empowering voice for women and an outspoken advocate for reproductive rights, accessible and affordable early care and education, and other issues that impact women and mothers in Montgomery County. And of course, she has been a mentor and inspiration to countless women in leadership, many of whom are sitting on this stage. And she's been a mentor to me personally as well. According to Harvard Business School professor Francis Frye, "Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence and making sure that impact lasts in your absence." I am proud to have worked, laughed, sometimes cried, and gotten through some historically challenging times with each of you. And please rest assured that your legacy will live on with this new council and throughout our entire community. But today, we welcome six new members, each with their own innovative ideas and legislative priorities. Marilyn Balcom, Natalie Fani Gonzalez, Don Lutke, Kristin Mink, Lori Ann Sales, and You will join my wonderful returning colleagues and I, Evan Glass, Will Jawando, Andrew Friedson, and Sidney Katz. As was noted earlier, this new council body is historic in many ways. I am particularly proud that this new council represents the largest-ever number of women on the council, the first female majority on the council since the early 1980s, and the most racially diverse council in Montgomery County's history. We have representing us the first black woman to represent the entire county in an at-large The first Asian American to ever hold elected office on the council of Montgomery County. We have first-generation Americans and others who have made Montgomery County their home after immigrating from their home countries. And the first openly LGBTQ+... And the first openly LGBTQ+ member of the council who tomorrow will be elected council There will be many more firsts, and that is good news for all of us. This council not only reflects our county's increasingly diverse population, but also aligns with the surge in women running for office in the state of Maryland and across this nation. If there's one takeaway from this election cycle, it's that the base of elected leadership in Montgomery County and in the state of Maryland is changing, and we all benefit from the diverse perspectives and views. We enter this new chapter with a sense of hope and optimism for our future and for the future of this county in the face of challenges that lie ahead. The floodwaters of the pandemic have begun to recede, but their devastating impact has left a scar on all of us, especially the most vulnerable. The people of Montgomery County want a council that works hard to deliver results and make Montgomery County a greater place to live for people of all abilities, to work, to play, to raise a family, and to age in community. And I'm confident that together this council will meet this moment by building the work of its predecessors, pushing forward just social policies, and working under the mantra that we all succeed when we all succeed. We all succeed when we work together to make our community safer by addressing the epidemic of gun violence through commonsense legislation and working with our partners in law enforcement and in our community to approach public safety through a holistic, multi-pronged approach that incorporates expanded use of mental health professionals and... and access to mental health resources. We move our county forward when we build a local economy that gives our residents the tools to move forward by supporting our small businesses and entrepreneurs and enhancing access to workforce development and good-paying jobs that are accessible to people from every corner of this county. We move our county forward by investing in our large and small businesses who drive the economic engine of our community and take advantage of emerging innovations and industries. We are also focusing on enhancing connections between our region's job centers and neighborhoods by public transit. We all succeed when we work collaboratively to build more housing, especially around transit, and with an emphasis on attainable housing options so every person can afford to live, work, and raise a family here in Montgomery County. And we move forward together when the stains of racism and hate are forever cleansed from every area within our communities and the principles of respect, tolerance, and equity upon which this great county have been built apply to all. We all succeed when we make Montgomery County healthier by addressing and closing the gap on health disparities that were exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic and delivering services in a culturally humble manner. And by ensuring that our county is a community for a lifetime where we can age with grace and vitality. We move our county forward by addressing persistent opportunity gaps in academic achievement, which is not only an economic imperative, but a moral responsibility. And we must ensure that all children in our county schools have the means to succeed and the teacher, support staff, and administrators have the tools and support they need to guide our most precious commodity: our children and youth. We must also continue to expand access to high-quality and affordable early care and education. And we all succeed when we work together to face the existential threat of climate change and put forth bold, sustainable solutions to help us meet our ambitious climate goals and ensure our children and future generations have bright futures ahead. We must also accomplish all of this by being prudent stewards of taxpayer dollars and prepare for rainy days and challenges that lie ahead. Now, we know this work will not be easy, but we have seen that what can be achieved when we work together with our neighbors, nonprofit organizations, brothers and sisters in labor, the private sector, community groups, and our partners in Annapolis and Washington. The 20th Council is ready to roll up our sleeves. Serving Montgomery County has been the honor of a lifetime. As we all join together to take the oath of office as we all join together to take the oath of office today, thank you. We collectively accept the responsibility to meet this moment with resolve and serve the more than 1 million residents who choose to call Montgomery County home with humility, integrity, and grace. Anyone who knows me well is aware that I am a student of history. I am also a firm believer in President Lincoln's leadership principle: that commitment is what transforms a promise into reality. The commitment determination and understanding exhibited by each member of the 20th County Council fills me with tremendous hope and optimism about the future of our community. Thank you for celebrating with us today and for your ongoing commitment to join with us to continue building an even stronger Montgomery County for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Albernaz, for those inspiring words and for your leadership over the past year as the President of the County Council. Now, please welcome to the podium Biku Sagarananda Tien, the Secretary and Director of Amada Vija Ra. He offers a reflection for the day.
大家好 That means hi, hello. As we gather here today to celebrate this watershed moment, a new, I'm sorry, a new beginning full of new opportunities, we commend the men and women who stand up to serve. At the same time, we must recognize all people behind the scenes: spouses, family members, friends, colleagues, and people of this great county. Without them, none of us would be here today. And with humility, we ask for their continued support as we embark on this new journey. Let us cultivate boundless love toward all people in our community by meditating as follows: We who are skilled in welfare, who wish to attain the state of Nirvana, the highest bliss, should act thus: We should be able, upright, obedient, gentle and humble, contented, unburdened, not wasteful, with senses calm, prudent, and without greedy attachment. We should not commit the slightest fall for which the wise might censor us. Let us pray: May all people be happy and secure; may they have peace and wellness. Whatever people they may be, feeble or strong, powerful or powerless, seen or unseen, those strolling far or near, those who are born or those who are yet to be born, without exception. Let us not deceive one another, nor despise any other person; let us not inflict any harm to one another out of anger or ill will. Let us pray: May all people be happy and secure; may they have peace and wellness. Just as a mother would protect her only child at the risk of her own life, let us cultivate a boundless love toward all people. Let us cultivate this mind of boundless love for the entire world, above, beyond, across, without any obstruction, without any hatred, without any enmity. And not falling into wrong views, being virtuous and endowed with insight by discarding attachment to sense desires. Never again are we subject to sansara. And let us pray: May all people be happy and secure; may they have peace and wellness. Let us develop this mindfulness of boundless love at all times so that we can create a heaven on earth. Et tena saghe wa jena ho to no jaya mangalang. By the firm determination of this truth, may the joyous victory ever be ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tien, for those beautiful words. Now, we're going to ask all of us to shift gears a little bit and this program that you have in your hand, turn it over to the back. And there are some words: "To this land is your land." We invite you to join us in a sing-along, and we hope you find inspiration in the words and the music for "This Land Is Your Land." You'll find the lyrics on the back. And we're going to be accompanied by the U.B. Blake Chamber Ensemble under the direction of Jonathan Ising.
Hello, everyone. Hi. Would you all kindly sing "This Land Is Your Land" with us, please? Thank you. This land is your land; this land is island; from California to the New York island; from the redwood forest to the Gulfstream waters; this land was made for you and me. As I was walking that ribbon of highway, I saw above me that endless skyway; I saw below me that land. This land was made for you and me. I roamed and rambled, and I followed my footsteps to the sparkling sands of her diamond's desert. And all around me, a voice was sounding: "This land was made for you and me." When the sun came shining, and I was strolling, and the wheat fields waving, and the dust clouds rolling, as the fog was lifting, a voice was chanting: "Sing, this land was made for you and me." Thank you.
What a great song. Can we give a round of applause to the U.B. Blake Chamber Ensemble? Kelvin? We hope you enjoyed that sing-along. And I understand that the man who is about to be sworn in for another term as County Executive, Mark Elrich, specifically requested that we all join in and sing this song. So thanks for bringing a little fun, a little feeling of community. All right, now is the time for the inauguration of our next county executive. Mark Elrich has served as the seventh county executive for the last four years. He has spent most of his life making Montgomery County a better place to live and raise our children. You know his story. He's been an elementary school teacher. He's been a member of the Tacoma Park City Council. He's been a 12-year at-large member of the County Council. Whatever Mark has done in government, he's been a tireless champion for people who need a hand up. He's committed to racial equity and inclusion, to finding new and innovative ways to expand our economy, to combat climate change, to build a 21st century transportation center system, ensuring that our communities are safe and that our public safety officers treat everyone equitably, aggressively addressing affordable housing needs and providing more funding for education and early care. Mark is a leader who believes that we must ensure that every resident, no matter what their zip code, has a good quality of life. He's a problem solver who will accept nothing but the best from himself and his team as they serve the residents of this great county. So please join me in welcoming our county executive, Mark Elrich. The Honorable Karen Bishell will return to administer the oath to the office of the county executive-elect. Raise your right hand. Good afternoon. I'm Mark Elrich. Do solemnly swear
I'm Mark Elrich. Do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
and support the Constitution and laws thereof.
and support the Constitution and laws thereof.
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my skill and judgment
to the best of my skill and judgment
diligently and faithfully
diligently and faithfully
without partiality or prejudice
without partiality or prejudice
execute the office of
execute the office of
county executive
county executive
according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations.
So, thank you very much for all being here. And that last song is "This Land Is Your Land", written by the legendary Woody Guthrie in the midst of the Great Depression. It became an anthem to what America could be. And his words are as important as they are as they were 80 years ago. Our charge is to build a better home for all of us. And we know what has to be done, and we can do it. That is what the 12 of us were elected to do on this journey ahead. I'm grateful to be here with all of you, and I want to start by thanking my family for all their love and support. We're all surrounded by a community that enables us to succeed. I'm truly grateful for my community, without whom I would not be before you today. I'm pleased to be here with this historic county council. You've heard people talk about how historic it is. When I first broached the idea of expanding the council, we discussed the impact it could make on diversity. I don't think any of us imagined that this would be the result of a majority of women, six new women, and a council more diverse than ever. So for the skeptics who didn't think that would happen, it happened. I want to welcome all of our new council members and the returning council members. I look forward to working with each of you for the betterment of Montgomery County. We also made history at the state. I'm very excited to work with our Governor-elect Moore, Lieutenant Governor Miller, and thank you for joining us today, Comptroller-elect Leirman, and Attorney General-elect Brown. This is a truly historic slate of leaders who all understand how important Montgomery County's success is to the priorities of the state, and I look forward to a great partnership with each of them. I want to recognize our partners in education: Dr. Monifat McKnight, Dr. Jermaine Williams, and Dr. Anne Kadamium. Your leadership is key to keeping Montgomery County's reputation as the education and workforce capital of our state and the region. And I do appreciate your leadership. Thank you. And finally, I look forward to working with our state delegation, too numerous to name, but it's led by our good friends Senator Ben Kramer and Delegate Julie Palakovich Carr. And you've got a big job ahead of you, but I assure you that our county, all of us, are ready to stand with you to make sure we all succeed. So please join me in giving all our elected officials and county leaders another round of applause. So, four years ago, I stood before you, and I don't think any of us could have predicted what we'd be dealing with: a global pandemic, an economic disruption of a great magnitude, an attempted insurrection, and so much more. And by the way, isn't it good to be in a place where people say they will uphold the Constitution? But it was COVID that really changed our lives. And when I saw the images of New York City where body bags of COVID victims were being dragged out of buildings, I was determined that that was not going to happen here. And because of our collective efforts, we succeeded. The death rate from COVID in Montgomery County was only 2/3 the national average. And if the other three counties had followed our lead and had the same results as us, there would be over 300,000 fewer dead Americans. That's what we did meant. So thank you all for the role you played in making that happen. Today, we're the most vaccinated large jurisdiction in this country, and we did that by turning to our community partners who helped us reach deeper into our communities and enabled us to achieve high rates of vaccinations for all our residents, including residents who normally might not have been as successful in getting vaccinated. Our success cannot be credited to any one leader or institution. It was accomplished by our collective and communal response to this unprecedented health threat. I want to thank the public for following the science-based advice. I want to thank our amazing county workforce that pivoted in a matter of days to mobilize and fight COVID. I want to thank the doctors and nurses and all the healthcare workers for your selflessness. You put your lives on the line to keep people safe. And I also want to thank the people we refer to as the essential workers on the front lines of grocery stores and shops that were kept open, keeping things clean and ready. And they did all of that of being some of the lowest-paid workers in our community. Someday, we have to connect the word "essential" to decently-paid people. And I want to thank our incredible nonprofit partners, many of whom are here today, who are helping to increase testing, vaccinating, and providing access to food and other necessities. We pivoted our service delivery to increase collaboration with our community partners. We made sure that county employees were fairly compensated. We worked with our business community to eliminate unnecessary regulations and speed up the permitting process, and there's still more work to do there. We built the county's first year-round homeless shelter. I want to tell you how that happened. We're sitting in a meeting a year and a half ago, and I asked, because we all thought this was going to be over, not last summer, but the summer before, and I said, so what happens to the homeless people who are in our rec centers? And I was told they go back to the streets. I said, then and there in that meeting, that's not going to happen. I told our folks to build the shelter. We built the shelter. September that year, we had an implanting. March of this year, we opened it. Less than a year to go from an idea to an open shelter. We worked with police and with community groups. And I think my prompter was stuck to begin reimagining public safety and provide more transparency and accountability. And we also increased resources and pay. Resources. We've got more people working on the streets as mental health people than we've ever had before, and police pay is once again comparable with the other jurisdictions in this region, which it was not. And we did all this while maintaining our AAA bond rating and without increasing taxes. The county's taken on big projects, starting Bus Rapid Transit, making county properties available for new affordable housing, and starting up a new Montgomery College campus in the East County. And a couple of weeks ago, we announced a new partnership with the University of Maryland System to create an Institute for Health Computing in North Bethesda, which the dean of the University Medical System said would make us the Silicon Valley of health computing. And if anything takes time, this is a perfect example. It took me three years to get this project put together, but it was well worth the time and effort. This initiative will provide leading-edge computing, data visualization, and AI research, along with the talent from the University of Maryland and the population data from the University of Maryland Medical System, with our proximity to federal research institutions and a trained workforce, and an ecosystem of booming life science and advanced computing companies, something very important and something very special is going to grow here. We're changing the narrative about the economic future of this county from pessimism to optimism. Too often, we can be our worst enemies and allow well-funded political forces to dictate a manufactured, false, and negative narrative about this county. But the stars are now aligning for renaissance in our economy, built on the foundation that this county has always been known for: a robust education system with a highly educated and highly trained workforce. That is us. When 75% of the voters this November voted to reelect me, they sent with them a message. They want to continue the progress that we've made together, and I'm focusing on delivering on this promise. We are, no doubt, one of the best places to live, work, and raise a family, yet we face serious challenges. Our challenge in the broadest sense is to build one county for all of us where our fates are not determined by our zip codes. So I want to address four of the big challenges, and there are more than four. If I don't name them all, forgive me, but I have a time limit. So I'm going to focus on what I think are four of the most important. And first is affordable housing, which is our greatest challenge. We're at a tipping point. And this county, well-intentioned as it may be, has spent too long in a fantasy land when it comes to solving this problem. In the mid-'70s, we launched a program, what was then a signature housing program, called the moderately-priced dwelling unit program. This program was designed to serve teachers, firefighters, and police officers, because these were the people struggling to find housing in the community. Think about what we know about that today. At that time, our county was 95% white, 4.5% black, 0.5% other, and the economics of our residents skewed differently than they do today. Today, the county has tens of thousands of people who struggle to find housing at lower incomes than the MPDU program serves. In other words, we don't build anything for them. Our nonprofits can't produce enough units to meet our needs. Our MPDU program, which requires developers to provide only 12.5% to 15% of the units they build to be affordable, it doesn't work. We have tens of thousands of households who are severely rent-burdened, paying 50% or more of their income for rent, for whom nothing is being built. Nothing. And the future projections of who's going to move here will actually make those numbers worse. Current policies won't create the housing we need, and the math simply doesn't work. And you all are smart enough to know the math. If I get 15% of new market units as affordable, it doesn't come close to meeting the existing projected needs. The gap, it's like something like 50,000 units. That's not even close. Reagan-esque trickle-down economics suggests that just building more market housing will solve the affordable housing crisis. Anything associated with Reagan should be immediately dismissed. But the market doesn't build any more affordable housing than governments require them to build. And that's a sad and sorry fact. When I was at the end of my tenure on COG with the Transportation Planning Board, and Sharon Bullevo from Fairfax County got up, and she said, "Developers do not build any affordable housing that we don't require them to build." So if we want different outcomes, then we need different policies that actually create So we're going to propose taking aggressive steps to increase the county's supply of affordable housing by preserving our affordable housing stock, producing more affordable housing, and protecting tenants from displacement. We're going to propose legislation that requires no net loss of affordable housing when existing housing is replaced. That replaces our MPDU program with a program that expands the number of units required from new development and serves a wider range of incomes, so that everybody who needs housing can find it. And we're going to propose a rent stabilization program that will stop unconscionable rent increases that have plagued some of our renters, who make up almost 40% of our county's population. If any of you can imagine, I know some of you can, because I see your shirts back there, what it takes to make it in Montgomery County when you spend 50% and 60% of your income on housing, you know what a tough place we find ourselves in. Our rising rents cause us to lose more units every year than we create, and this has to The next challenge we face is climate change, where the news only gets worse every day. And yet, the world kind of dithers around the edges. Half measures are not going to stop this impending disaster. Five years ago today, the council passed the most aggressive climate goals in the country. There are many obstacles to progress, including climate deniers, the misbelief that there are no solutions, that we lack resources, or that we simply can't make a difference. People need models. They need success stories that show we can overcome the obstacles, and Montgomery County will continue to be that example of success. And this is how we're going to reduce our carbon footprint. We're going to help provide funding for buildings to transition from gas to electric. We're going to electrify our vehicle fleet, using approaches to make this happen sooner rather than later. We're going to retrofit our county buildings for energy efficiency. We're going to expand the collection of food waste countywide and move to composting. We're going to expand the implementation of solar on rooftops, parking lots, and fields. And by financially assisting marginalized communities, who are most often impacted by climate change, we're going to help them transition to clean energy. a climate change threat. In the end, we have to go on this journey as a community. This is not something government can do by itself. I want to talk a little bit about racial equity. A little less than 60 years ago, when Dr. King was in the halls of Congress lobbying for what was then landmark civil rights legislation, a reporter asked him how he felt about critics who said he was moving too fast. And King responded, quote, "They want us to wait another 40 years." Forty years has come and gone. And for almost every metric, I should probably take out the word "almost," every metric of what we call success, whether it's health, homeownership, income, or educational attainment, Black people are at the bottom of the metric. We know that systemic racism exists and that inequalities permeate our system. That is reality. And we are working to do what we can to address this.
We are the senator.
Our new--
We are the senator.
Thank you.
You're not doing it.
Our new health officer will bring a focus on health in all policies in the county, including working with health providers in the county to broaden and increase the effectiveness of and access to our community health programs. We're going through a reevaluation of public safety, because we know that adverse and/or unnecessary police interactions have a disproportionate racial impact. And we're creating a restoration center to divert more people from the criminal justice system. And we need to seriously rethink our approach to crime. Our jails are centers of punishment, not rehabilitation. We psycho people from jails to streets and back again and make it impossible for them to get jobs or to rent apartments. We think such a system will not, to think that such a system will improve society is beyond me, and it's an expensive way to spend your money for very little result. We know that homeownership is one of the keys to bridging the racial wealth gap and creating general wealth, generational wealth. And we are increasing the focus on homeownership. Our racial equity office is examining both our operating and capital budgets to scrutinize spending from an equity perspective. And the East County campus of Montgomery College will open new doors to education. So I'm excited by our new partners in the state, as this is a priority of the new governor. We have many goals in common, and there's much we're going to work on together. And this is such a change from the last eight years. You cannot imagine, maybe you can, what a big difference this has been. And then there's the growing economy. We're determined to drive economic development as a self-confessed-- As a self-confessed progressive and environmentalist, I know we cannot build a better future without better jobs and more resources. Economic progress provides the resources to speed social progress, which costs money. Over the last 20 years, we watched Northern Virginia outpace us as they invested more in their transportation infrastructure and weaponized their education assets to better attract business. I've often said that if someone is eating your lunch, you should probably figure out how they got it. It was the story of how Virginia landed Amazon that drove me to find academic and research partners for our life sciences sector that resulted in the Institute for Health Computing coming to North Bethesda. In my tour of these companies, the thing they emphasized, "We are the number four life sciences center in the country. We are the only one lacking graduate-level research." And we were determined to change that, and now we are changing that. And we're going to make-- And we're going to make investments in transit and education that we need to succeed. And knowing there's life beyond life sciences, we're going to continue to help the small businesses, who are in so many ways the lifeblood of our county. With a new governor, a new comptroller, and a new general assembly, we're going to get the right deal and project for I-270, I-495, and the American Legion Bridge to ease congestion, save motorists from high-cost tolls, and protect our environment and communities. And I've been asked to work with the governor's staff in addressing this problem, so I'm excited about this. So you may be curious as to what makes me tick. Some people are. I've lived in this county since I was 10 years old. I moved from the District of Columbia. I went to my first anti-war demonstration in DC when I was 12. At 13, I went to this 1963 March on Washington. I protested the war in Vietnam until it ended. That was a long time. And I saw the toll it took on people throughout the country, and I especially was concerned about those who were forced to fight an unjust war for a country that would deny them their civil rights when they came home, while I sat safely in a classroom with my student deferment, which I eventually signed away. I saw racism up close as a student at the University of Maryland, where Black students weren't hired and Black students weren't able to find apartments in the community. Having grown up with overt racism and antisemitism, I was not a stranger to mindless hatred. I could not accept the politics that ignored the lack of humanity embodied in what I saw around me. I fought for tenant rights and rent control in Tacoma Park. As a teacher at Rolling Terrace Elementary School, I taught kids in a community too many had forgotten. I saw firsthand the effects of poverty and policy failures. When you teach children every day for whom every dollar their parent spends on rent is a dollar that's not available for food, clothes, or fun, when you come to see how business transactions, like paying rent, can impact every aspect of a person's life, you will start weighing these things in a moral sense. I did. I've maintained that activism and still see myself as an activist. I serve the interests of people, and I try not to overpromise. I recognize I don't have magical powers. Sometimes I can't do what I'd like to do, because that's just the way it is, unfortunately. But I don't think that just because you're an elected representative, that the job description requires you to defend institutions, policies, or practices, just because they exist. So I've told my staff at all levels that if there are better ways of doing things, I'm not afraid of change. Some people see changing as a confession of errors. I see change as a growth opportunity. At my core, I know Montgomery County is the best place to raise a family, to open a business. Having grown up with overt racism and antisemitism, I was not a stranger to mindless hatred. I could not accept the politics that ignored the lack of humanity embodied in what I saw around me. I fought for tenant rights and rent control in Tacoma Park. As a teacher at Rolling Terrace Elementary School, I taught kids in a community too many had forgotten. I saw firsthand the effects of poverty and policy failures. When you teach children every day, for whom every dollar their parent spends on rent is a dollar that's not available for food, clothes, or fun, when you come to see how business transactions, like paying rent, can impact every aspect of a person's life, you will start weighing these things in a moral sense. I did. I've maintained that activism and still see myself as an activist. I serve the interests of people, and I try not to overpromise. I recognize I don't have magical powers. Sometimes I can't do what I'd like to do, because that's just the way it is, unfortunately. But I don't think that just because you're an elected representative, that the job description requires you to defend institutions, policies, or practices, just because they exist. So I've told my staff at all levels that if there are better ways of doing things, I'm not afraid of change. Some people see changing as a confession of errors. I see change as a growth opportunity. At my core, I know Montgomery County is the best place to raise a family, to open a business, and to look to the future. It is absolutely true. In my life, I've been able to travel all over the country. I have never been in a place that feels like Montgomery County, and I am so glad that I chose to raise my family here. I'm appreciative of all those who helped us to get where we are today. All of us stand on the shoulders of others. When we talk about equity and inclusion, you have to think about Ike Leggett and the role he played in broadening the table in Montgomery County. So I take no credit for inventing the path. I'm just traveling on it, because it's the right path to be on. I look forward to the work and the partnership ahead with all of you. I know that Montgomery County's best days lie ahead, and we're going to get there together.
Thank you, Mr. County Executive, for those remarks. And we look forward to seeing what you're able to accomplish together with the council. Here to offer blessings to close out this inaugural ceremony is Imam Rafai Arfayan from the Islamic Community Center of Potomac, and he will bring us some remarks.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Sustainer of the universe, Fountain of mercy, Source of all love, Light of every corner of the earth. We give thanks for our newly-elected leaders, their families, and their staff for their commitment to service and dedication to justice and liberty for all. We seek to heal our world from the scourge of demagoguery and division. We seek to reverse patterns and systems of disadvantage. We seek a society where difference is valued and merit is appreciated, where the economy grows for all, and entrepreneurship, ingenuity, and hard work are all rewarded, where justice is for all and freedom is not the privilege of the privileged, where reason prevails over fear and love defeats hate. To that end, bless our leaders who subscribe to the politics of love and progress. Let them stand for something so they don't fall for anything. Bless them to make you the ears that they hear with, the eyes that they see with, and the limbs that they grasp and walk with. May we leave this gathering in peace, blessed, unified, humbled by the task ahead, and resolved to govern with wisdom and grace.
Lovely parting thoughts. Thank you, Imam. This concludes the 2022 Montgomery County Inauguration Ceremony. And on behalf of everyone on today's inaugural committee, we thank all of you for being here today. Thank you for allowing me to be your host on this historic day of celebration. Also, one final note: please see an usher on your way out to get your parking ticket validated. And as you emerge from the concert hall, please enjoy the music of the Baltimore Symphony Orchestra brass.